You know, as we move forward. So I would recommend that course of action. I know we've heard also heard from our Board of Assessors and Assessors Assessment Staff that they don't feel that this is the way to go either in terms of getting us having us see a trajectory of improvement, as well as I've heard from some people who've been very vocal about this area as being under assessed, that they don't they don't feel like that this is, you know, the best measure to get at these things either. So I just think it's a valid issue for us to continue to have that we need to have some more aggressive conversation around and foster some more accountability and transparency and potential improvement. But I don't think the task force is necessarily the way to go about doing that.
Commissioner Arrington?
So I guess I'm supportive of this idea in general, and I think that we do need to have these conversations, particularly given, you know, even the comments that we heard today from Mr. Boster about commercial property. I think it's really valuations and assessments. And I think sometimes we and the public get confused between the difference between those two different things, the valuation and the assessment. My understanding is that the valuation is virtually the appraisal of the property, the value of the property, whereas the assessment is the amount that is taxed, right? So when a hundred thousand dollar property is assessed at forty percent of that one hundred thousand value, so you pay taxes on that on forty thousand, not on the full one hundred thousand. And so I think we need to certainly have clarity around that issue. I do want to echo Commissioner Barris' concerns with these task force and committees. It's kind of a double edged sword, right? Because if the problem that we have, we don't really have the staff and the resources to support the task forces and committees like we really should. But if we don't put this in place, then I don't know how we get back. I don't know how we get back to it or how it gets back on the agenda. I mean, frankly, you know, I'd love to have Mr. Conley maybe come down and talk about this at the next meeting. I don't know, Mr. Manager, if you can put him on the agenda or if I need to or one of the commissioners need to put him on the agenda. But we need to talk about it because, I mean, if there's just a misunderstanding between valuation and assessment, then that's an easy fix, right? Then we don't need a task force. If it's just making educating the public to let them know the difference between evaluation and the assessment, it's a real easy fix. I think it's more than that, and I think we could benefit from having taxpayers and experts in the community at least make recommendations to us that maybe we could add to our legislative agenda or maybe that we could provide to our Fulton delegation, right? Obviously, going to be too late for this year's session, but, you know, I think there's value in both. But, you know, like Commissioner Barris said, I remember we tried to when we did the reparations task force, we couldn't even get commissioners to nominate people. They couldn't they didn't have a quorum. They couldn't move forward. They had to do bylaws. It took two years to get it populated. And so I'm supportive of the idea in general. I wonder if we could maybe hold this until after the the next meeting and maybe after we hear from Mr. Conley to see, you know, what his thoughts are on this. And then have you talked to him? And yeah, I'd love to hear what he had to say.
Yeah, so we had a meeting with him on Wednesday for several hours, our team, Tuesday, was it? I'm sorry, it couldn't be Wednesday because today's Wednesday, Tuesday. And very informative, and he also too shared some of the concerns about what would that I also shared with the county manager, that he wanted to make sure it wasn't an extra layer of, you know, you know, oversight on him, and that's not at all on what it is, but more to what you're saying that the this is all in reply to the constituents saying, somebody explain this to us, like what? How do other counties do it that are similar to us? And we certainly don't have the resources, nor does his group, and he's here right now, nor does his already understaffed department have the resources to start doing sort of a education campaign for constituents. So we wanted to we expressed to him that we would want to do that and take that on. So I know task force seems to have like a bad, you know, a little bit of a, oh, what are they going to do? Who's going to be on it? All of that kind of stuff, whatever. But it's really like a working group to better help and be more transparent for from them to the constituents. And that's really the intent of where I was going with that and at the request of my constituents in District Four, where many of the properties that they are always raising as objectionable lie.
You made a subsequent motion to hold.
I did, but Mr. Conley is here. I was holding so we could hear from Mr. Conley.
I was holding so we could hear from Mr. Conley, and he showed up. But I'm happy to hold or hear from him now.
Which one? You know, you don't have no objection to hold it?
No, I have no objection to hear from him or hold.
Okay. How about you just give us a brief update? Maybe we can still hold and you can give us just your understanding of what's going on and we maybe we can talk and before we bring it back and try to make it make sense for everybody.
It's not on.
Mike, you got to turn the mic on. There we go.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, Chairman. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Roderick Conley, Chief Appraiser of the Board of Assessors. We have received some feedback, some concerns from taxpayers, and we remain we remain open to consideration, some of their feedbacks and the thoughts that they share with us. Thank you, Commissioner Ivory, for your mentioning of the audits and the standards that staff has worked hard to make ensure that they met. To your point, Mr. Arrington, I believe there are some fundamental misunderstandings. Again, we remain open to having dialogue, and we have and we will continue. But I do think continue or increase outreach may also be a way for us to kind of bridge some of those gaps, if that makes sense.
Yes, thank you, and I do I do think that makes sense. I have no problem with holding.
All right, Commissioner Arrington, you still have the floor. You going to make that motion?
Yes, motion to hold.
All right, seconded by Commissioner Ivory. Mr. Barrett, you still want to be heard? All right, you have the floor.
Well, I certainly appreciate the idea of holding to keep the conversation going. I'm not sure I'm going to be on board with the task force as a resolution. That said, I would like to keep the conversation going so and make sure that we get somewhere. And I appreciate you coming down, Mr. Conley. I want to say first of all that I think you guys do a really good job on the outreach that you currently do for residents when we did our town hall. And I know a lot of my colleagues have done town halls jointly with your department to help explain assessments and appeals and all the things. And I think you guys do a good job of that. And so I think it might be worth trying to put some kind of slideshow together or something that kind of explains the difference, at least at a high level, on how commercial versus residential are appraised, that you have various methods, how those methods are chosen, which departments are the, you know, who's your oversight department, where the laws come from, and the roles of the different bodies that interact, the Board of Equalization, the Board of Assessors, where do we fit in as commissioners, where does state law fit in, right? And then also, I think, you know, there is there are a lot of reasons that properties appear to be assessed at a lower value than people think they should be. And I think even sort of laying some of that out in terms of, is it an abatement because of a development authority deal? Is it multiple parcels? Is it, you know, is it a freeze that went on that now maybe won't happen again because of the changes around 299C? So I think it would just be helpful to kind of almost have like a, you know, like an infographic that explains all the different pieces and parts. Because I think what happens in the in the public dialogue is that it just becomes a very high level conversation of my home, I'm assessed at ninety percent of my value or appraised at ninety percent of my assessed at ninety percent of my value and somebody else at, you know, a commercial property only at fifty percent. And there's not the nuance isn't built into that rhetoric, if you will. So I just think the more we can do to be transparent and maybe it's a thing where we all then go out with you to our various constituencies to sort of help spread the message of how it works. The other thing I think happens, and we've been hearing this, it was from as soon as I when I was running, I was aware of this issue and then since I got here. And I know a lot of people have talked about it and worked on it over the years. But there are certain sort of properties that keep coming up as examples, and it might be good to just like sort of address those very specifically, not all of them, because that could take you, that's like a whole other job, but to pick certain ones at least and sort of show your work essentially, this is why it's this way.
Commissioner Barrett, can I just just tell you this one thing, that that is what he's done already? He has he has, oh, I'm sorry. Okay, you want me to? Well, that's what he has done many, many times in the town halls and even in a in a breakdown of, let's say, Pond City Market, for example, has done a whole breakdown and it hasn't been satisfactory for the public.
Right, but I think there has to be ongoing. It can't be just because, you know, only a handful of people come to a town hall. And, you know, word is sort of people are spread the word and they spread that sort of high level messaging. So if that's if there's a way to make that, and I just that's sort of continuing what what Vice Chair Ellis said, if there's regular updates and some, you know, data, this is how many appeals we had, or whatever it is, that we just continue to keep the messaging for, you know, in the forefront for folks, that we we are aware, we're paying attention, and we're providing you the sort of real information. I'm just saying, for what I'm hearing from my constituents and what they're not aware of and lacking and all of that, and as many times as we explain it, it's complicated. So we need you guys to kind of be the ones to do the explaining, I think. That was my only point. All of that to say, I think another suggestion might be, because I know you guys are busy, you know, we have Mr. Naraki as an example, who interacts with justice and sort of acts as that liaison. It may be that somebody just needs to sort of from, you know, from your side, be the liaison, as opposed to having a whole task force in the middle, that there's somebody that's and you may already have that, too. But, you know, that is producing those kind of that kind of data and reporting.
Vice Chair Ellis?
The one thing, the one thing I don't want to get lost in this is like we we have a group of people that we appoint, right? And they are our task force. They are, you know, these citizen representatives through us collectively nominated. And I'm perfectly fine to hear from Mr. Conley, and I do think that's great. But I think they need to be part of that as well, right? And because they are they need to be representing, you know, they're like any other board, right? I mean, they're they're hiring they're hiring you, right? You know, they're providing you feedback with the way that they things are going and things that we need to think about improvement upon, just like we would where they're on staff. And so I think that needs to be part of the process for us communicating directly with them and it being more in a public forum as opposed to just random. So, you know, when we have you come down here, I want to see, you know, both you and, you know, whether it's the full board, doesn't have to be the full board, but, you know, a representative from there. And and it might be good for us to have, you know, maybe one meeting a year where we have a joint meeting, right? I mean, that's something, but minimally, you know, when we do a quarterly update, let's have folks from both sides be down here. Because I do think there is there are some open opportunities for certain things that folks feel like they're not being being heard on and that board taking action on or being responsive back to them, you know? So it's not necessarily always just, just like we wouldn't say, hey, you know, you know, our manager didn't do a good job of explaining it. Our citizens expect us to be able to explain it as elected folks. So in turn, you know, for the folks that we have on the members of the Board of Assessors, we expect them to be able to explain some of this stuff back to us when we call and ask a question. Not that they, you know, and by and large, maybe that that happens most of the time. But we I think that there are some opportunities for all of that to get better and collectively this thing get to a better space than than where it is right now. Whether that manifests itself in significant changes in valuation or not would remain to be seen, you know? But but at a minimum, we need to get to a point where we've got, you know, as high degree of confidence from the public on where we are with commercial assessments as we do with residential assessments. And clearly, we're not there at this point in time.
All right, Commissioner Abdur-Rahman.
Chairman, I'll be brief. Thank you, Mr. Conley, for coming. I just want to go record, I'm not supporting this. And the reason I'm not supporting this, I feel as though we can get to where we need to be without this. I think you, since you've been here, you've made some incredible strides to educate people and to get them to understand how the process work. I'm a big person that believes in staying in my lane. I want the county manager to work in his lane. I want everybody, including you, to be in your lane. That doesn't mean that we can't have a conversation about communication. We can have a conversation about some things. But I think sometimes, especially in my opinion, this is a hot button issue. It's an issue that's going to come up when when certain individuals are running for office. It is what it is. We deal with it every year. However, I'm one that looks or wants to look at government running smoother and less convoluted, less trying to add another layer as opposed to dealing with what we have now. And so I understand what this may be trying to get to. I don't think it's the correct vehicle. So I just want to publicly say to you and the maker of it, I can't support this. I think we got a better way of doing this. And I want to thank you for what you and your staff does. Thank you.
Commissioner Ivory, motion on the floor is to hold.
Okay, yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appraiser Conley, I want to just say thank you for the amount of time that you took the other day to sit down with us and go through this thoroughly. You know that anytime I put something forward, I've researched it thoroughly and have asked all the questions. And I'm glad that by the time we left that meeting, you were in support of this because it could do something to help out. But I'm fine whether a resolution passes or not to continue doing the work that my constituents asked me to do. And that's what this came from, as I had shared with you. You know exactly who those constituents are. So we will continue to do the work. And then I just wanted to say thank you to the county manager, who I also had a long conversation with about this and felt that this could be helpful as well. But it doesn't matter whether we pass this, hold it, or don't do it. We'll just continue to figure out solutions for how to get the information to the constituents so that they can better understand it. In my office, you know, both my chief of staff and my deputy chief of staff, three lawyers at your disposal, along with the county attorney, to try to figure out how to make what is complicated language much easier for the citizens to understand. Because town halls have not fixed this problem. The Board of Assessors has not fixed this problem for a long time. And so it really was just an intent to make it clearer. So let's just keep the conversation open and we can keep talking about it.
Understood, and thank you guys for your feedback. Thank you for your continued support. And as you know, this is not a conversation that started overnight. It's been going on for quite some time. Again, and I look forward to working with you guys so we can make sure we get the message out.
Thanks so much.
See you at our next meeting. A lot of what's been discussed, we're already working on. That's, you know, there. All right, next item. Yeah, I'm sorry, motion on the floor is to hold. Thank you.
And the vote is open on the motion to hold? And the motion passes, five yeas, zero nays. Twenty-five, zero, seven, nine, zero, External Affairs. Presentation and approval of the 2026 legislative agenda.
Okay, as she's she's coming up, they're coming up. Some of you are aware that the son of our lobbyist, Speaker Terry Coleman, his son died unexpectedly this week. So, yeah, anyway. And then secondly, before we adjourn today, let me give a shout out to, I think this is unanimous, to our Board of Elections for another election that was well run. I give us another A plus for the way the one yesterday was connected, so conducted, rather. So Ms. Nadine Williams is not here today, but if she's listening, we can certainly communicate with her how proud we are of the work that they're doing.
Thank you for that, Mr. Chairman. And of course, we're keeping the Coleman family in our prayers. We will, at the last meeting, we spent a lot of time and reviewed all the items in great detail. Today, Mr. Chairman, typically, the board chooses to approve our legislative priorities item by item. So that's that's up to you, of course, but that's what you've done in the past. So I just want to mention that. We're going to go through these pretty quickly. There are a couple that we will make a few notes about, just based on questions we've had over the last couple of weeks. And of course, if there are any questions, please stop us. So first one, so Chairman, I'm assuming you would like to continue to vote item by item? Okay.
But quickly.
Yes, we're going to do it the easy way today. All right, next slide, please. This is just a recap. Next, policy priority, justice resources, additional judgeship for Superior Court and judicial officers. And again, we reviewed these at the last meeting in great detail. Any?
Yeah, I'm adamantly against this. I am adamantly against Senate Bill 10. So I don't know how anyone else is going to vote, but I, again, have had horrible, horrible encounters and interactions over the last 29 years with judicial officers and judicial assistants who are not reportable or accountable to the general public. I am absolutely adamantly against judicial officers. I understand we need more judges. I understand our judges are overworked, but this is not the answer. And colleagues, I implore you, please do not support this.
Commissioner Arrington, would you like to bifurcate this item, which includes both the additional Superior Court judgeship as well as the judicial officers?
Oh, yes, we do, yes, because the only part I'm opposed to is Senate Bill 10, definitely. I'm fine with.
So the first priority then would be additional seeking support for additional full time Superior Court judgeship.
I guess we need to vote on that.
I can't make the motion, Chairman.
So what do you want to, you want to vote on each one?
That's what I, again, it's really up to you, but that's what you all have done in the past.
Okay. All right, a motion to approve by Commissioner Barrett, seconded by Vice Chair Ellis.
Are we only doing half of it right now?
Just, yeah, just the, yeah.
And the vote is open?
Just for clarity purposes, this is on the Superior Court, additional Superior Court judge.
Yes, Commissioner, thank you for that.
And the motion passes, six yeas, zero nays.
Thank you. The next would be support for Senate Bill 10, which would authorize the Chief Judge to appoint up to five judicial officers.
Well, let now, give us the pros of this. We supported this in the past.
Yes, sir. So this was in response, this is a bill that we worked on last year based on the direction of the Board of Commissioners to add judicial officers. There are in Senate Bill 10, there are limitations on the kinds of cases. It also explains the qualifications of the judicial officers. This bill crossed over, it has already passed the House, it is back in the Senate in rules. And so I'm not sure I could add much more, but they they would be providing additional support for Superior Court.
All right, the motion on the floor is to approve by Commissioner Barrett, seconded by Commissioner Abdur-Rahman. Commissioner Arrington?
Thank you, yes. The Superior Court already has magistrate court judges helping them hearing cases. They already have judicial officers for family law. There's no reason for any additional judicial officers. Judicial officers, I'm just telling you, they, I mean, it's awful. They gave somebody's custody away, didn't have jurisdiction, the person had not been served, but by the time that was over, the damage had been done. And there was no way to undo it. And these people aren't accountable to anybody. They're not accountable to anyone, absolutely not.
Commissioner Ivory?
I think to better understand it so that we can sort of put it in the context of real life, it's non-lawyers acting as judges.
They would be, I should just note, Commissioner Ivory, they would be attorneys. They would not be judges. They would not be elected judges. They would still be attorneys, though, and they would have to meet the qualifications. Is that correct, Ms. Campbell? So they are they are attorneys, but they are not judges.
Okay, so attorneys with how much qualification, how many years of service? Because that makes a very big difference for, you know, an attorney to act as a judge and take custody away from a mother or, you know, have somebody spending time incarcerated from an attorney that hasn't necessarily been practicing in this area for any length of time. I share that concern.
Of course, and I just to add a little clarification, there are currently judicial officers operating in the Superior Court in the family division only. They are not handling any other kinds of cases. One other, one other, I guess, point that is in this bill as drafted is that they would not be able to handle elements of like seven deadly sin cases or very serious felony cases. Jasmine, could you speak, please, to the qualifications? I don't, I just did not bring the bill itself with me.
Yes, from what I remember, they meet the same qualifications as the Superior Court judges. It's just that they're not elected, but they still have to meet those same requirements that the Superior Court judges have. And they're appointed by the Chief Judge. I can pull up the bill, too. I don't remember the exact language, but I'll be able to pull up the bill.
And we're doing this as a measure because it's a faster, lower course option than additional judgeships? Is that the reason?
The additional judgeship is a requirement that the state must allocate or decide who gets an additional judgeship. That is decided by the State Administrative Office of the Courts. Fulton County has currently 20 judges. We have been seeking an additional judgeship for quite some time. Only this year, there is a formula that the State Administrative Office of the Courts uses to evaluate workload. Based on that, although we have a very heavy workload, we have not made it to the top five. We are in the top five now, but we are not in the top three. So it's very much dependent on the state budget. So this would give, if this were allowed, this would give the Board of Commissioners control on funding for those positions, for example. It would not be requiring the state to fund those positions. So the really, the the underlying issue is the just massive volume issues in the jail, all of those kinds of things that we're familiar with. I understand Commissioner Arrington's support. He has expressed that previously. I did want to mention that this became part of our 2024 package based on a bill or a resolution that this board adopted in December of 2023, right before you joined the board, Commissioner.
Okay. And can you just tell me, what's the accountability structure for a judicial officer?
So they are accountable to the, again, they're appointed by the Chief Judge of Superior Court. So they would be, those judicial officers are reporting to the court structure, to the judges themselves, to the Chief Judge in particular. And so it's my understanding that they are doing work similar to what a like a physician's assistant on behalf of a licensed practicing physician.
Yeah. Thank you so much for that. I'm going to side with the guidance I've been getting from my team who have been in the courtroom in these very situations and with Commissioner Arrington to say that I think the serious nature of what judges do, that I would want to have a judge that the people chose to do that. So I'm not going to support this. Thank you.
Commissioner Barrett?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think the key issue for me here is, first of all, the Superior, and just correct me, Jessica, I'm wrong, I'm saying this as a sentence, but it's sort of a question. The original request to have more JOs came from Superior Court. That's correct. Yeah. So Superior Court is asking for this because they are 5.6 judges short. And even if we were to get lucky this this session, but it doesn't sound like we will, and get a judge or two appropriated, we wouldn't get five also, correct? We would get one? We hope to get one. Right, so we would still, even if we get one, we would still be 4.6 judges short. And I think, you know, they do meet the same criteria. They, you know, the Superior Court is asking for them because they need more judges or more judicial officers hearing cases so that we can move cases through the system faster. And I think this gets back to overcrowding in the jail and all the other things. So I think we need to do everything in our power to improve throughput in our justice system.
so that we can move cases through the system faster, and I think this gets back to overcrowding in the jail and all the other things, so I think we need to do everything in our power to improve throughput in our justice system, and, you know, that is why we passed the resolution we did back in 24, and I think, I think it's worth moving forward with this, especially given that as we are able to, it doesn't preclude us from getting judges through the traditional process, so as we get those, we would be able to sort of, you know, get rid of the judicial officers, and we wouldn't need them anymore, but for now, I believe we need this as a stopgap measure, so I'm supporting it.
All right, motion on the floor is to approve. Commissioner Arrington?
I, I would just say, we already have magistrate court judges that can hear it, there's no, there's no need to have judicial officers, there are already magistrate court judges hearing Superior Court cases every single day, civil and non-felony, non-serious felony, just like in there, it's already happening every single day, it's already happening, why, why do we need to bring on more people? We have people that, we have magistrate court judges that are doing this all day, every day, they're already in place, they're already on board, so, this is, this is a bad, bad idea, and it's going to hurt people.
Vice Chair Ellis?
Magistrate court judges, court judges are appointed by the Chief Magistrate Judge, correct?
Yes.
They're not elected, these folks would be appointed by the Superior Court Judge and not elected, correct?
That is correct.
They have the same qualifications, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, let's vote, the motion on the floor is to approve.
And the vote is open? And the motion passes, four yeas, two nays.
All right, next?
Next is online publication of legal notices. I did want to clarify, make one quick point of clarification, because I got some questions from the last meeting. One, next slide, please, the, the last discussion, the last meeting, we talked about this notion of allowing online publication of legal notices with the legal organ to meet the legal notification standard. I did not and do not suggest that Fulton County is dissatisfied with our legal organ, that is not even actually in the purview of the Board of Commissioners, so, wanted to make that clear. I know that the newspaper industry has faced a number of challenges, we have, our lobbying team has connected with the lobbyists for the Georgia Newspaper Publishers Association, so would be in dialogue with them as well as others, so I did just want to make that clarification based on some questions we received. It is also factual that the Atlanta Journal Constitution has announced that they will cease print publication by the end of this year, that has a direct impact on some of the notices that we are required to publish, so that's all I wanted to say, Mr. Chairman.
So, what do you recommend to hear?
Approval of this item as part of our legislative agenda.
All right, motion to do so by Commissioner Barrett, seconded by Commissioner Abdur-Rahman. Vice Chair Ellis, Commissioner Arrington, Commissioner Barrett.
I think Vice Chair stepped away.
Uh, Commissioner Arrington?
All right, you said that we don't determine who the legal organ is?
That is correct, that is a decision that is determined by the clerk of courts, the probate, chief probate judge, and the sheriff.
And so, who is the current legal organ?
The South Fulton Neighbor Newspaper, although they publish as Fulton County Neighbor Newspaper.
And there was a problem that you mentioned at the last meeting about the timing or the frequency.
It's definitely been a change, and many people have, have expressed a challenge that, our prior legal organ was the Fulton County Daily Report for many, many years, and they printed multiple times a week, the Neighbor prints one time a week, and so, there's a bit of a longer lead time to get those legal notices published, so the suggestion of allowing the online notice, you didn't have to wait for the print publication to come out, was one part of that. This board has also talked a lot today about transparency, most people, I think we would agree, get their information online, and so, rather than going to find, so we're not suggesting they, they can and do publish it online as well, but that online notification can be done typically faster than a print paper.
All right, well, I, I mean, I guess I'm supportive of this, but I, I want to, you know, what's the, if we post it online, we could post it on our own website, we don't need to post it on the legal organ website, we could post it on our website.
That, and we do typically post most of our legal notices online. I think, Commissioner Arrington, there, the Georgia Newspaper Publishers Association has been typically very concerned about the economic impact on small newspapers, you know, I've spent my whole, the whole life working with newspapers, and certainly think they have a very important role in our community, so I don't think we're trying to make a proposal to negatively impact that industry.
Okay, and, and you said it's the clerk of court, the sheriff, and who else?
And the chief probate judge.
And they all, all three of them have to agree, or is they do it by a vote?
They collectively selected, I couldn't speak in great detail about their process, but they-
So, there's no written process, is there state law, is there county resolution?
There is a state law, and I'll be glad to pull that for you.
Okay.
But, but again, this proposal was not about changing the, the legal organ so much as the process of the notification.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Ivory?
So, you're saying we would still keep our same legal organ, we would just go online with it?
That, essentially, and again, those ads are currently published online, but to allow that online notification to meet the standard in anticipation that just as the HAC has ceased print publication, others may do that in the future.
So, I just wanted to clarify, because the Atlanta Voice was here today, and so, I think that they were saying that they would like to be the legal organ, were you, did you receive that as saying that they would like to be the online legal organ, if this, if we go to the legal organ, are we?
I don't, I didn't have much more information than what they shared today, Commissioner Ivory, and we'll be glad to talk more with them, but again, the nature of our, I wanted to clarify that nothing in this legislative priority was meant to insinuate a change in the legal organ, but more about the process of advertising.
And that online legal publication would be deemed acceptable as a publication?
That's exactly right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the motion on the floor is to approve, Commissioner Abdur-Rahman.
Just quickly, Chairman, Janice Ware, I'm very familiar with the Ware family.
Yes, ma'am.
Grew up in southwest Atlanta, her father and everything, from my conversation, she wants the opportunity, I think it's more important to her that she has the opportunity since she is from a family that has historically been around when others have not survived, and she's still at it, and so, I, I just want to say, if there's an opportunity, she wants the opportunity, that's all I wanted to say.
I will make sure to pass on that information.
All right, the motion on the floor is to approve, let's vote.
And the vote is open? And the motion passes, six yeas, zero nays.
How many more?
Just a few more, Chairman, all right, they'll go a little faster, the next one is about supporting local control and opposition to sovereign immunity waivers, and that this board, as part of our legislative priorities, opposes legislation that would diminish home rule authority, restrict the rights of duly-elected officials to govern local affairs, and oppose efforts to weaken local control or waive sovereign immunity protections.
All right, motion to approve by Commissioner Barrett, seconded by Commissioner Arrington, let's vote. Come on, Ms.
And the vote is open? And the motion passes, five yeas, zero nays.
Thank you, next is increased state support for behavioral health and diversion programs, this includes efforts by Georgia DBHDD to expand crisis network, advocacy for programs that reduce the cost burden of behavioral health medications for people in jail, and support of the use of the diversion center by local law enforcement in efforts to expand pre-arrest diversion as alternatives to incarceration.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Barrett, seconded by Commissioner Abdur-Rahman, please vote.
And the vote is open? And the motion passes, six yeas, zero nays.
Thank you, next is expand healthcare access and strengthen the healthcare workforce, advocating for increased healthcare access for residents, support expansive access to health insurance programs such as Medicaid Affordable Care Act, healthcare marketplace, and other affordable healthcare solutions, advocacy for ACCG's position, urging the Department of Community Health to maintain healthcare coverage for pre-adjudication inmates, also supporting increased state funding for medical residency programs to help, help grow the healthcare workforce.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Abdur-Rahman, seconded by Commissioner Barrett, please vote.
And the vote is open? Motion passes, five yeas, zero nays.
Thank you. Next, the Housing Authority of Fulton County requesting an amendment to requirements for the commissioners of the Housing Authority to ensure compliance as written here.
All right, motion to approve by Commissioner Barrett, seconded by Commissioner Abdur-Rahman, please vote.
And the vote is open? And the motion passes, six yeas, zero nays.
Thank you, next is support for House Bill 886, which would prohibit the use of public funds for ransom payments and cyber attack incidents.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Ivory, seconded by Commissioner Abdur-Rahman, please vote.
And the vote is open? And the motion passes, six yeas, zero nays.
How many more?
Just a couple more, Chairman.
We talked about, you know, really shortening our list, that's a criticism we always get.
Those first, and I wanted to, I'm glad you brought that up, those first three that we discussed are the highest priorities.
Those are the main ones, okay.
Yes, sir. The next would be, this is, we just heard from the chief appraiser and about the need to simplify that process, so this is supporting ACCG's efforts to clarify and improve implementation of the established rollback rate specifically, which was part of House Bill 581 and House Bill 92.
Yeah, motion to approve by Commissioner Abdur-Rahman, seconded by Commissioner Barrett. Now, this is one that we all need to get behind and work.
Agreed.
Interested in the Board of Assessors, this is a big one, that there's a, be a lot of opposition to it, for the real estate folk in particular.
And the vote is open? And the motion passes, five yeas, zero nays.
The next one is about NextGen 911, supporting ACCG's position, this would affect many of the smaller 911 systems operating within Fulton County, and would increase public safety across the county.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Barrett, seconded by Commissioner Abdur-Rahman, please vote.
And the vote is open? And the motion passes, six yeas, zero nays.
Next is about just ongoing support for secure, fair, and accessible elections, ensuring that cost for special elections that are borne by either the state, or typically the state, especially where they call an election, for example, two weeks after a general election.
All right, motion to approve by Commissioner Barrett, seconded by Commissioner Abdur-Rahman. Commissioner Abdur-Rahman, you have the floor.
I'm not sure if this legislative agenda would speak to it, but we know that we had the mix-up with 8:00 PM and 7:00 PM, when, when the state has a race, and so, I would like anything that we can do at the state level to bring it concurrent, which means that if municipalities, I know if they have over a certain amount, they, they have the opportunity, but I think we can find some kind of common ground, and that may be a conversation for later, but I do want us to make sure that we're having those conversations, even if they're offline.
Thank you, Commissioner, great point.
All right, motion on the floor is to adopt, let's vote.
And the vote is open? Motion passes, six yeas, zero nays.
Thank you very much, next is about transit board representation, I'm seeking a permanent seat on the ATL Board and parity with other MARTA agencies and appointment of MARTA board members.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Abdur-Rahman, seconded by Commissioner Barrett, please vote. I'm, I'm sorry.
Two, two hands up, two votes for this, good Lord have mercy.
And the vote is open? And the motion passes, five yeas, zero nays.
Thank you, almost done.
You said two more about five ago.
I said that, all right, support for legalization, I think you're going to like this one. I said, this is for support of legalization, we've talked a lot about revenue today, and as, there is a lot of support, HAC just did a poll about speaker, the speaker's proposal to reform property taxes, which is our number one source of revenue, so this would really be looking at other revenue options, such as casinos or permutual sports betting, with the idea of dedicating those funds for public safety, mental health, and public health services.
I'd like to agree with Commissioner, two hands up on this one, let's go, let's vote.
And the vote is open?
Thank you.
And the motion passes, five yeas, one nay.
All right, the next is, this is from the Marshals Office about making some changes to the, the fee authorization in eviction cases, so, we went over this a bit last time, but this was one that they brought forward as a challenge.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Abdur-Rahman, seconded by Commissioner Barrett, please vote.
And the vote is open? And the motion passes, five yeas, zero nays.
Thank you, and the very last one, this was, Commissioner Barrett, you brought this to our attention last, at the last meeting, many, some counties around the state have established family justice centers, this would be, these are centers that serve especially individuals who've been victims of domestic violence, sexual assault, child abuse, elder abuse, and human trafficking, this would simply be advocating that the state provide financial resources for centers of this nature.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Barrett, seconded by Commissioner Ivory, please vote.
And the vote is open? And the motion passes, six yeas, zero nays.
Thank you very much for your patience, and we appreciate your support.
Have you set the legislative dinner reception yet?
We'll be sending that communication out to everyone this week.
Okay.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, continue?
No further items.
No further items to come before us, we are adjourned, thank you.